Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of October twenty fourth. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance. We are the state's chairman. And to the republic, our wishes stands. One nation under God. In this all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Filling in this evening is our deputy clerk, Melissa Major. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Here.
Trustee Willis.
Here.
Trustee Colton.
Here.
Trustee Piperman.
Here.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Here.
President Holtholz.
Here. Representing staff this evening, our village manager is attending his wife's inauguration as the new president of Moraine Valley College. So in his stead, our assistant village manager Tyler Hall will be filling it. To my right is our village attorney Chris Cummings. To the audience's right, our police chief Denise McGrath, finance director Amy Zikowsky, community and economic development director Angela Maseris, and public works director John Schaefer. The minutes of October tenth. Any additions or corrections? Trustee Purcell. Trustee Willis. Trustee Colton.
All good.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones. And trustee Roman.
Nothing.
They have a motion to approve the minute, please.
Sue.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell. Trustee Willis. Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The claims list of the amount of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and forty-eight cents. Again, comments or question? Trustee Purcell.
Nothing.
Trustee Willis.
And no.
Trustee Colton.
All good.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones. And trustee Roman. They have a motion to approve the claims list, please.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Purcell, seconded by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The claims list is approved. Of that seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar claims list, three items comprise the majority of that list. Our payment to the city of Chicago Heights for water was three hundred and thir- three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Our payment to Thorn Creek Sanitary District was ninety-nine thousand dollars. And our payment to the village of Thornton for our intergovernmental agreement with Menards was seventy-eight thousand dollars. That amounted to four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars or sixty-four percent of that claims list. Meet the merchants, Mrs. Sarris.
Good evening. Tonight for meet your merchants, we have the owners of Upside Daisy Boutique, which is at one eighty-one hundred Martin Avenue. We have Julie Smith and Suzie Moore here to introduce their business. Thank you.
Come on up, please. Yeah, but I do this with chocolate, so now you did before it's yours.
As Angela said, I'm Julie Smith. This is Suzie Moore. We own Upside Daisy Boutique. We have been in business since March of two thousand and fifteen. We started our business through the pop-up program in Homewood. So in the fall/winter of two thousand and fourteen, we had a space over next to Suzie's Hallmark within what is now Jonathan Kane. And we opened our business in March of two thousand and fifteen. We've got a great customer base in the area. We do a lot of home decor, women's clothing, accessories, new baby items, and a lot of outdoor decor planters and whatnot. Do you have any questions or?
Sure. We're going into the holiday season. What should people be looking for?
Oh, boy. Well, we've been unpacking all the holiday stuff over the last week. And we'll be busy Sunday and Monday turning the shop over to holiday. So a lot of gift items, things that are very big are all of our holiday candles and our water lanterns. We sell a lot of the illuminated and musical water lanterns, a lot of clothing. Anything you can think of as a gift item for the holidays, stocking, stuffers, ornaments.
Yep.
So.
And the range of prices.
Pardon?
The range of prices.
Oh, boy. Range of prices. I mean, you could buy anything at Upside Daisy from a card for five dollars up to a large birdbath for two hundred and fifty dollars, you know? So we have a kind of a price point for everybody.
All right. What are your hours?
Our hours are Tuesday through Saturday, ten to five during the holiday season. Right after Thanksgiving, we'll be open on Sundays, twelve to four.
And again, your location.
Right down the street on Martin Avenue, right next to the Homewood Flores, where Homewood Flores used to be.
Where Berkstein's Deli is going to be going in.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And not only are Suzie and I own Upside Daisy, but we also own the building. So we have our storefront, we have Vida Taco, who is a tenant, and then we have two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom apartment upstairs.
Okay.
And I can, I can definitely tell you that people are interested in renting in Homewood.
We found that out.
Yeah, yeah, very much so.
Sure. All right. We'll look forward to your holiday items and you're going to be open every day of the week until five o'clock.
Tuesday through Saturday.
Tuesdays.
Ten to five.
Monday's your only closed day.
Yeah, right. Typically, Sunday and Monday. But we'll be open Sundays during the holidays.
Okay. We appreciate you being here and we look forward to the holiday shopping.
And please don't be offended that we're gonna leave and go have dinner.
Thank you.
Vida tacos for dinner. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Rickman. Been a resident in Homewood for, oh, maybe thirty years. And a couple of years ago, my schedule cleared and I decided to, to be able to attend these board meetings because I never was able to before. And I decided to start coming about six months ago. And just getting more involved in local, in politics in general, but and I volunteered to be an election judge a couple of years ago. And I just wanted to compliment our board, our mayor and our board for being a board of integrity and Homewood and Flossmore both, this community. The more involved I get and I see some of the other things that are, things that are happening in some of the other villages, I'm kind of appalled. And I'm just, makes me more grateful. And the financial, you know, fiduciary responsible, being in the black here and all the transparency and clearly this board is puts the interests of the residents above self-interest. So I just wanted to thank you for being people of integrity running our village.
Thank you for your kind remarks.
Thank you.
Office of office, Mr. Schaefer.
Joshua. Mayor and work trustees, I'd like to introduce you to Joshua Berman. He is our new assistant director of public works. Joshua was hired as assistant director of public works on October ninth. Joshua comes to Homewood with ten years of public works experience from Orland Park, where he held a position of utility supervisor. In that position, he assisted Orland with the execution of water main, storm sewer, and sanitary sewer improvement projects as well as day-to-day operations. He was also responsible during the winter months as he shared the responsibility for snow and ice control. Joshua is a Homewood resident with his wife Elizabeth and their two dogs Holly and Wrigley. They value time spent with family and travel. Joshua is very excited for this new chapter in serving the community that is that him and his family live in. Joshua has already proven to be a great asset to the Department of Homewood Public Works, and we welcome him into this new position and look forward to watching his career grow. Joshua, the clerk will square you in.
The first time for both of you.
I'm Stacey.
Hi, Joshua Berman.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of assistant director of public works.
The office of the assistant. Assistant director of public works.
For the village of Homewood.
For the village of Homewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances.
Municipal ordinances.
Of the village of Homewood.
The village of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Assistant director.
Assistant director.
Of public works.
Of public works.
Supporting to the best of my ability.
Supporting to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Major, you have flawless. Yeah, I'm the best, all, please.
The board is asked to approve the reappointments of Cherie Henry to the Veterans Committee for a three-year term through October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-six, and Barbara Dawkins to the Economic Development Committee for a two-year term through October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. The board is asked to approve a budget amendment allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds, thirty-one thousand dollars for the downtown tree grate replacement, fifteen thousand dollars for fire department brick landscaping, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for forest paving at the Harwood Metro Lot, and thirteen thousand dollars for village-wide street patching. The board is asked to pass a supplemental resolution appropriating an additional eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of motor fuel tax funds to cover the work by Gallagher Asphalt Corporation for phase two of the village's pavement patching project. The board is asked to award the bid for the two thousand and twenty-three Motor Fuel Tax General Maintenance Paving Patching Program, Phase Two, to Gallagher Asphalt Corporation of Thornton, Illinois, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, sorry, four hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The board is asked to authorize the village manager to enter into a fourth amendment to the lease agreement with T-Mobile Central LLC with an adjusted lump sum payment to the village of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. T-Mobile has six cellular antennas and associated equipment at the Pierce Avenue Water Tower.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Is not board comments? Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Nothing.
Trustee Willis.
No comments.
Trustee Colton.
Nothing.
Trustee Hyferman.
Always good.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Of the three.
And trustee Roman. They have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, please.
Sue.
Been moved by trustee Colton, seconded by trustee Willis. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Old business. The petitioner has withdrawn his application for a special use. There is no item on the agenda for that this evening. New business. Ms. Sarris, redevelopment agreement for apparel redefine.
Under new business, tonight we have a redevelopment agreement for apparel redefine and a resolutions for county class eight and contract to purchase for the properties at thirteen thirteen, one hundred and seventy-fifth Street and thirteen fifty-one. Apparel redefine proposes to redevelop village-owned four-acre parcel that is located at thirteen fifty-one, one hundred and seventy-fifth Street for its production facility and to renovate the office building directly to the east at thirteen thirteen, one hundred and seventy-fifth to serve as its headquarters. The village-owned four-acre parcel was part of one hundred and seventy-eight acres of land along one hundred and seventy-fifth that the village purchased in nineteen ninety-two, which is now the Prairie Lakes Business Park. In nineteen ninety-six, the village completed infrastructure improvements to promote the development of forty-one of the one hundred and seventy-eight acres. This four-acre parcel is the only remaining land in the Prairie Lakes Business Park beauty, and the village has tried for thirty-one years to market this property for development. During this time, the parcel has been generating no money in property taxes as a base village owned. John Leroy, owner of Apparel Redefined, contacted the village in June of two thousand and twenty-two, seeking available space to relocate and expand his offices and production facility, which is currently located in Crestwood, Illinois. Mr. Leroy was interested in the site. However, his company needed two additional acres of land for a total of six acres. The village proposed to purchase the building at thirteen thirteen, one hundred and seventy-fifth Street, which is directly east of the thirteen fifty-one for apparel redefine to use as its headquarters. Members of the Economic Development Committee, staff, village board members during that time visited with Mr. Leroy and visited Apparel Redefined's existing facility to see Mr. Leroy's space needs and his vision for his production facility. And on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. Leroy presented an overview of his company at a village board meeting, and the board approved a purchase option for the office building at thirteen thirteen, one hundred and seventy-fifth Street, and a letter of intent for apparel redefine to purchase both properties. John Leroy, the CEO of Apparel Redefined, and Joseph Paluski of Paluski Financial, as well as Bruce Rock, their architect, and Dan Shapiro, the attorney, are in attendance at tonight's meeting, and they've prepared a presentation to discuss their plans for this development. Want to come forward?
How you doing? Thanks for having me back and make your time consideration. It's an honor to be here. Like I said, we, since we last met, we introduced our, you know, our history, where we came from, what we plan on doing. After that meeting, the village and apparel redefine entered into a letter of intent, which outlined our mutual understanding and intent to facilitate a relocation of apparel redefine's world headquarters to Homewood, Illinois, and the construction of an operation center, which will allow apparel redefine to expand its production and employment. Over the past several months, apparel redefine has assembled a team, including a financial advisor, project attorney, architect, civil engineer, landscape designer. We have an engineer, a different engineer as well, soil engineer team, and special foundation engineering team, along with the village development team to, to plan out our, our development for the project. We're here to present the plans to you today. We're excited to share with you our preliminary designs and renderings reflect the joint efforts of the village and apparel redefine. Up there, you'll see the aerial of the site with the existing office building that will become our, our headquarters, parking lot, and obviously the vacant land. Before we get into the renderings there, we do have some, some architectural drawings on Joe on those, yeah, those right there. So that first, that first slide, if you will, is basically to show on the entire piece of property, including the office building, existing office building, and the other four acres that we intend to have two phases of development on. The first phase would encapsulate about forty-five, forty-six thousand square feet of production facility. And with the space that's left, we'd be able to essentially double that hopefully within four to five years, depending on economic conditions and market conditions as well. But this is a good size for us to be able to comfortably stay for the long haul and, and take our operation to the next level and be able to employ double to triple the amount of current employees that we have here. The next one, Joe. This is showing phase one. So that's kind of a blow up of the current phase, which is about forty-five, nine, or forty-six thousand square feet, and how it's aligned on the property. We want to be consistent with how the existing office building is, is placed because we do want a cohesive and innovative look to make it look connected, right? Because we are going to have a connector. You'll see as we, we pass through the next couple of slides here, it'll be a glass two-story walkway connecting the production facility to the existing office building. In the office buildings, we'll have our graphic design, our creative talent, our sales team. We have a really good relationship with a, a manufacturing company that will be actually using our facility as a showroom piece for them to showcase equipment. Because we're unique in the fact that we provide three different types of decoration underneath one roof. Really good inroads and partnerships with this development company, where we can also utilize, you know, the casino, all the attractions that are down the street to invite, you know, potential customers all over the country to come see our facility. So the next slide, I believe, is the landscape. Yep, that's the landscape. The plan to, the landscape architect drew up for us. So it's somewhat reflected in the renderings that you'll see in a moment, but these were followed by the landscape architect looked at the code and the ordinance and drew up the landscape architect plan as well. The next slide should be, is that the last one over there? Okay. Actually, Joe, it was the two behind. That's right. Ran out of real estate on a use line. So this just shows more of an architectural layout elevation of all four sides of the building with the glass connector to the existing office building. Could see the two-story walkway there. It just, again, an emphasis on making it look like it's always been there and connecting the two design styles to make sure it's a cohesive look as you trail down one hundred and seventy-fifth Street. The next, you can see this is the internal space, the layout, the temporary, the preliminary layout of our production facility. There's a lot of open space. If you, if you're in our facility right now, you need a lot of, there's a lot of movement of boxes into the different areas of production. So once we started laying out the equipment, because right now we have existing equipment, but we're going to purchase probably double that equipment. So we're going to lay it out, have everything laid out eventually, once we really settle on a design and a layout of the building. But right now, working with the civil engineers to see where utilities come in and figure out where the bathrooms and the locker rooms. We have a mezzanine on the right side of that. You can see an internal loading dock up towards the top where Joe pointed now. And then behind that will be a mezzanine area where it'll have like a full pan, kind of a break room office space for when the creators want to come over from the office side. Come over, it'd be a nice area to tour with new clients as well. We can overlook the production facility. And underneath that, we'd have potentially an employee fitness room, another employee break room over there, but just a nice space, open air space to overlook the production facility. And that's just a closer view of what would be underneath the mezzanine in terms of the bathroom facilities for men's and women's locker rooms. And that's the last one there. So now, as we go through the renderings here, three D rendering that we had, you know, one, one of, you know, our T-shirt designers had him take a stab at coming up with building design. I just wanted to show the, the future plans where we do want the existing office building to match in terms of the look, coloring of the, the future build out. So these are just some different elevations and different looks of the building from different angles. It's important that we, you know, keep the existing trees that are there behind the office building, so that's, that's built into the plan as well. And we're adding obviously the other trees in front of the new building that's kind of going with the landscape architectural plan. That's just the overhead. So you see how it's aligned on the existing lot. More views of the glass connectors. So. Yeah. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Not? Trustee Purcell.
Um, first, I just want to say that I'm super happy and impressed with everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
I really like the fact that you used, one of the phrases that you used was look like it's always been there, you know? And following along with kind of flow of how everything looks over there, still a bit new. And I mean, it's, it looks like just a wonderful facility. It really, really does. I like what you're planning on doing with this.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for considering Homewood.
Of course, yeah.
I appreciate the presentation and how it helps us to get a, a feel for the, the vision you have for the space. It's a really exciting.
Thank you.
Ideas that you have here, and I'm excited to see it come to home.
We are too. Yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Col.
What's the timeline for phase one to be done?
Well, we're still working through some details right now. Ideally, we'd like to break ground early spring.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. But we're still working some details in terms of retention and retention of water. But as we work through that, we'll have a clearer picture. And once we get through the planning committee in terms of aesthetics, layout, and final decision like that, we could really start putting some firm dates behind that timeline. But for me personally, and for the company, we'd love to be moving in December, January of next year. So that gives us, if we, if we break ground in that March, April area, it, it should allow us to hit that timeline.
Okay. And at what point, at what point in the process is the remediation of the soil happening? Is that part of the groundbreaking or is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. How long is that going to take? Do we know, have an idea on how long that's going to take? Because I'm so happy that's getting done. I mean, you know, this is.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the only part that I was just, you know, wondering about. Um, I will tell you, this is blowing me away. It really is. Um, when I first, because it was like my fourth meeting, I think, that when you came in. And so my head was a little bit spinning.
Okay.
And I didn't know what to expect. Um, and I, first of all, just want to say that your presentation in June was literally one of the best presentations I've ever seen.
I appreciate that.
Um, yeah, absolutely answered all of our questions. Your vision is amazing. Um, this is what, what would, you know, this is our future. I've got some concerns about the area just because, you know, the world has been changing and, you know, with I, I, I don't, you know, office buildings, I don't know how much longer that's going to be really a viable, you know, use of space. And what you're bringing in is exactly what we need, and I'm super excited. And when you spoke in June, we talked about partnering opportunities. And I hope you're still serious about that because I sure am. And I want to see you be successful, and I want you to help us become even more successful.
I really appreciate that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Hyferman.
Looking forward to your September.
Thanks, sir.
Trustee Harris Jones.
I just had a question. Sure. Rendering right there, the larger door and the smaller door, what is, can you explain that to me? What is?
It's not totally accurate. It would probably be one large door, but it's a drive-in dock.
A driving dock?
Yeah, yeah. So you would have the ability for two trucks to pull in and the dock height would be internal. And for sustainability and for comfort for employees, right now, we don't have that. So when you get a delivery, UPS, FedEx, whatever, all the heat or all the air that's generated goes out because it could be a thirty to forty-minute delivery or unload. So we want the ability to go in and close and not, not to have all that exchange of air.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Roman.
Yeah, I just, I echo what everybody else has said. I love when it seems like somebody comes up here and is excited about planting roots in Homewood.
Yeah.
Um, we obviously all love Homewood and to see that you want to grow your business and expand and build this here in Homewood. I love the idea. I, it's exciting. I like to hear another business is excited about the casino and what that will do for your business. And yeah, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Over the years, you've been working on this now about two years, John.
Correct.
We've had a, a number of inquiries for that four-acre parcel, all of which were higher intensity, mostly involving trucking and uses that would not be compatible with the adjacent Isaac Walton Preserve. Your use is a low-intensity use. You're respectful of the preserve, and I respect you for that.
Thank you.
So I, I appreciate it. As has been said, welcome to Homewood. And with that. And with that being said, may I have one motion for all four of these? The redevelopment agreement with A and R Shield Screening, Resolution Thirty-One Sixty-Five, the Class Eight Tax Assessment for Thirteen Fifty-One, Resolution Thirty-One Sixty-Six, the Class Eight Assessment for the thirteen thirteen one hundred and seventy-fifth Street Building, and Resolution Thirty-One Sixty-Seven, the contract for purchase of thirteen thirteen one hundred and seventy-fifth Street. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Been moved by Trustee Hyferman, seconded by Trustee Purcell. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
The motions are approved, or the motion is approved for the four items. General Board Discussion. Trustee Purcell.
I have nothing else.
Trustee Willis.
Yeah, nothing.
Trustee Colton.
Nothing.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones. Trustee Roman. Uh, we have a free leaf pickup coming up. Mr. Schaefer, if you could explain to the audience the dates and what's required?
Yeah, once again, the, uh, village is offering, uh, free leaf pickup, uh, to the residents of Homewood. Uh, they need to have their leaves, uh, they can rake their leaves up, put them in a brown craft bag, uh, the big tall craft bags. And you can put them out, uh, with your normal garbage, uh, pickup on November first, November fifteenth, and November twenty-ninth. Uh, and there's no charge, uh, for those bags, whether you put out one or you put out fifteen bags, they will pick them up. And there's no green stickers or anything. So it's free to the residents.
And the bags can be picked up at the Ace Hardware, Home Depot, Menards, any of this. Okay, thank you very much. With that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property?
Summum.
Second.
Been moved by Trustee Colton, seconded by Trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Purcell.
Aye.
Trustee Willis.
Aye.
Trustee Colton.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman. Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
We'll take a short recess. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I have a whole stopover here.